Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First of all, like that handsome man on the video just said, I would appreciate it if you would all silence your cellphones. But we know ringouts do happen, and it's never funnier than when it happens to us up here, so please check that. Also, in an effort to have sufficient time to hear from audience members, we ask that when you come forward, to please identify yourself and state your address for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes, and ensure that you are providing new testimony to the commissioners, and we'll get through this expeditiously and efficiently. So, at this time, we will approve the consent agenda. Denise?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one, approval of March 1st, 2017, minutes of regular meeting. Item two, March Platts. Item three, 6379, 2017, rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the I-1 Light Industrial District located at 2930 North Highland Avenue. Item four, 6445, 2017, rezone from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District located at the southwest corner of South Kenton Lane and West Bitterroot Street. Item five, 6458, 2017, rezone from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District located at 6,000 East 33rd Street. Item six, 6459, 2017, rezone from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District located at 4101 South Klein Avenue. Item seven, 6476, 2017, rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the C4 Commercial Regional District located south of East 85th Street and east of South Minnesota Avenue. Item eight, 6355, 2017, preliminary subdivision plan for smart homes addition located north of East 26th Street and west of South Cleveland Avenue. Item nine, a resolution establishing subdivision authority boundary outside of municipal corporate limits between the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Crooks. Item 10, a resolution establishing subdivision authority boundary outside of municipal corporate limits between the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Harrisburg. Item 11, a resolution establishing subdivision authority boundary outside of municipal corporate limits between the city of Sioux Falls and the city of Hartford. Item 12, a resolution establishing subdivision authority boundary outside of municipal corporate limits between the city of Sioux Falls and the city of T. Item 13, a resolution amending the Shape Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, Denise. Are there any objections from the audience on items numbers one through 13 on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, we did have a request from an audience member to pull item number three from the consent to the regular agenda, please.
Okay, we have a request to move item number three from the consent to the regular agenda. First thing I will do is look for a motion to move item number three to the regular agenda.
Just want to approve the consent and then amend the consent to move the item.
Ah, gotcha. Point of order on my part. First, we will look to approve the consent agenda, commissioners.
Motion to approve. Second?
Got a motion to approve and a second, any discussion other than the amended? Okay. All in favor signify by saying yes.
First, we need to do an amendment, though.
You need to do the amendment.
And now the amendment?
And then we vote on the amendment, and then go back.
Mr. Chair, I make amendment, I make a motion to amend the consent agenda, moving item number three to the regular agenda.
Is there a second? A second? Any discussion, then? All right. First, we will vote on the amendment. Thank you. All in favor of amending to move item number three to the regular agenda? Please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. All right, and now approve the amended consent agenda. All signify by saying yes if approved?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. And the consent agenda is approved. We'll move on to the regular agenda.
You'll need a motion for the regular agenda first, please.
Commissioners, can I get a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on the regular agenda? Denise, if you want to read the items, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item number three, 6379, 2017, rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the I-1 Light Industrial District located at 2930 North Highland Avenue.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Building Services. This is an application by Ken Bradner. It is located on North Highland Avenue. The applicant is proposing to rezone roughly .77 acres to the I-1 Light Industrial District. The applicant would like to continue to utilize this lot for a contractor shop, excuse me, identical to what it has been used for, for over 20 years. You can see in the aerial, it's currently, it got storage and utilizes a contractor shop. If the applicant does improve this site, or if it's sold and somebody does improvements to the site, they will be required to do that Level C buffer yard on all four sides, and that would include the 30-foot setback, four-foot berm, or a six-foot fence, and the 40 units of landscaping for every 100th lineal feet. The proposed zoning does meet the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. This section of Norton Acres is a mix of residential and industrial uses. Currently and before, it was annexed into the city in 1982. The property has been utilized for a contractor shop for a significant amount of time. Finally, if these properties are redeveloped, the Level C buffer yard will be required on all sides. If the rezoning of this property is approved, this property can continue to be used as a contractor shop and will be conforming to the zoning district. If the rezoning is denied, the parcel will continue to be zone RD1, and there will be a contractor shop, and it will be a non-conforming use on this lot. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, and this lot has been utilized for light industrial for a significant amount of time, staff does recommend approval of this request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any question for staff? Is the petitioner here tonight? Good evening, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ken Bradner. I own the property at 2930 North Highland. I've owned it since the middle 70s, late 70s, and I've run my business out of there. I do a lot of work for utilities and the city of Sioux Falls, and small contracting jobs. I'm not going to change nothing, I'm just gonna get legal, I guess, you know? It's, you know, I was in there before it was even in the city, so... That's all I'm asking. I'm not going to build nothing or anything, I'm just...
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item number three? Good evening, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's Martin Weber, I live at 1815 East 34th Street North, and I've lived there for like 33 years. Norton Acres is a mixed neighborhood, but most of the neighborhood is residential and apartments. There are some few businesses that are kind of grandfathered in. I live, you know, right across the street from Renew Energy, I know that's all light industrial there. I don't see the reason for this. I don't want any light industrial in my neighborhood, around my house. I'm assuming none of you would either, it would think it's going to depress property values. If there's nothing then in the future, then someone to make one light industrial, why don't we go for two or three? And then once it is light industrial, then you kind of open the gates to what someone can do with the property in the future. It's a distressed neighborhood, they're trying to clean it, and I think Project Keep is coming to Norton Acres this month, trying to get people to fix up the place. If you keep it, you know, if you make it worse, making light industrial in and then mostly a residential area, I don't see how that's going to help or improve the neighborhood. I just don't see the purpose of it. If somebody's grandfathered in and he's done it so far, then he can just stay the way he is. Perhaps he can make himself legal by going residential instead of going to light industrial. I just, I just couldn't speak aloud enough. I don't want light industrial into mostly a residential neighborhood, it's going to hurt the neighborhood. Any questions?
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Weber, commissioners?
Thanks for expressing your opinion. Appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Mike, at this point, staff, can you address Mr. Weber's concerns as to why this particular rezone was needed at this point?
Yeah, this, I believe Mr. Bradner has been working with the zoning office to get this property in compliance. Properties that are zoned, single family, can't have contractor shops on them, or can't have storage, so I think he's been running into some issues with the zoning enforcement office, so we're just trying to get him to be legal since he's been like this prior to it being in the city. We just want to be able to let him, allow him to continue to utilize the property as what he's utilized it for, for 40-some years.
And if, maybe following on what Mr. Weber may have been concerned about, if the petitioner is no longer at this property and an expansion or any additional usage comes about, what would have to occur then?
If the applicant would vacate the property and somebody would come along and try and improve it for a light industrial use, something different than what's there now, they will have to provide all those improvements that I listed, the buffer yards, 30-foots on the north, east, south, and west side, plus everything would have to be paved, they'd have to have parking, so it would make it pretty cost prohibitive to actually do anything other than what it's actually being utilized for right now.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number Seeing none, I will look for commission action.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion?
It was kind of a tough one, but this has been light industrial use for 40-plus years, and again, we're just trying to get the gentleman into compliance. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't rezone this.
Well, and in fact, you're right, Steve. I noticed that where the building is placed right now would actually be in the buffer yard, and so if it were to go to anything even beyond what Jason talked about, likely they'd have to remove the bulk of the buildings to be able to comply with the buffer yard requirement anyway. So the likelihood of something like that happening, just because it's owned I-1, is fairly remote, I think, in this case, so I'm in support of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number three is approved. Earlier, I neglected to say, folks, if you were here for items number four through 13 on the consent agenda, you are free to go at this time if you would like. And we'll move on to item number 14.
Yes, Mr. Chair. 6219, 2017, rezone from the AG Agriculture District to the LW Live Work District for allowed forms located north of East 6th Street and east of North Ponton Avenue.
We have had a request from the applicant to defer item number 14 to the May 3rd Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Jason. We do have a request to move item number 14 to the May Planning Commission meeting. First, I would need a motion to approve that amend, or that deferment.
Move for a deferral of item 14 to our next May meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All approving the deferment of item number 14 until the May meeting, please signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed, same sign. Item number 14 is deferred.
Item 15, 6357, 2017, rezone from RS Single Family Residential Suburban and LW Live Work District to the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban and Sea In Conservation Districts for allowed forms located north of East 26th Street and west of South Cleveland Avenue.
The applicant here is Vince McCormick. The applicant is proposing to rezone this roughly 3.3-acre parcel from the Live Work District, which allows office and apartment-type uses, to the RD2 Town Home Suburban District and Conservation Districts. And he's looking at constructing a town home residential development on the lots adjacent to Cleveland Avenue, and then constructing single-family lots as you head west into the development. Access to the site will be from South Cleveland Avenue. The proposed zoning does meet the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. The proposed single-family and town home uses should provide a good transition from the existing office development to the south, to those condo residential units to the north. If this rezoning is approved, the applicant can construct the single-family residential uses on the lots as indicated, as well as the two-town home-style buildings adjacent to South Cleveland Avenue. If this rezoning is denied, the parcels will continue to be utilized as that Live Work zoning district, which would allow large apartment complexes of a maximum of three stories and 48 units, or other office uses on this site. Because the application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff on this item? Is the petitioner here this evening? Evening, sir.
Evening. Vince McCormick. And, can I, what do you need me?
Very good.
Just one description.
Anything, anything to add beyond what staff presented?
You know, what we're trying to do is, as Jason said, is make sure that when we set the townhomes into the residential, that we have a nice buffer off of Cleveland. I've spoke to many of the business owners in the area, along with folks that own residential housing in the area. We have taken into our plans 100-year flood situations and things of that nature, and we just, we think with our, what we have and what we're bringing to the community with these types of houses, that we'll be able to fit on some of these oddly shaped pieces of property in town, and develop them and clean them up, and that's the goal.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, any question for the petitioner?
Yes, I have one.
Excuse me, sir, if you could.
Lots number one and 22 show a little bit larger than the typical town home lot. What were you planning for those areas? We didn't see a lot of detail, so I'm just curious.
Okay. So, there is, lot one is the first town home, and so it has, it has the property, and what I wanted to do is allow enough buffer from the road, so that's, that's the setbacks that we chose for the sides, to comply with the city and to make sure that there was enough space off the road. And the same for 22. So there's seven, seven units to the north, and on the south, there's four units, and you can see 19 is also a little bit larger in size. That's to allow for setbacks and to have a change from the townhomes to the single-family, and allow a little bit more space there.
Looks nicely laid out, thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any discussion?
No, I'm in favor of it, I think it looks like a nice redevelopment of this property.
Thank you.
And I would agree, this is a great use of land, especially in, kind of in the middle of a very developed area, and I think it will clean up that part of town, so, I agree.
I think it's also quite a nice transition from the office uses that are to the south and to the west, and into the multifamily that's to the north, so it, it makes a pretty nice transition between all of that, so it works out really well from the overall comprehensive plan standpoint.
Great.
Very good. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of approving item number 15, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item 15 is approved.
Item 16, 6387, 2017, conditional use for an accessory off-site parking lot within 250 feet of a DD or AD form located at 818 East 8th Street.
The applicant here is Rick Gorley. This is located at 818 East 8th Street. The applicant is requesting a CUP for 15 parking stalls from the property owner to the west, I believe that's the existing Deuces Casino to the west, to meet the required parking for the RE2 form. The applicant is for the tenant, which is for a bakery, I believe Reddico's Retail Baking Shop is going to go in this, but their retail store, where you actually buy the stuff, will continue to be in the building, along with Ferencsú Brewery and those, so there will be limited customer traffic actually at the site. So leasing these parking spaces from the Deuces Casino will probably be a good, pretty good use of each parking lot. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here this evening? Good evening, sir, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Rick Gorley, Richard Gorley, 1914, South Phillips Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Gorley, anything to add?
Well, just a point of interest, that my great uncle built that building in 1950 as a grocery store, and that area to the west of it was a, was the parking lot for that, and so it's kind of ironic that we're kind of getting that back again. But, yeah, we're, we're thinking that we really will use the area quite lightly, so I think it's a good, good fit that we've got the parking that we do, so...
Very good. Commissioners, any questions for the petitioner?
All right, thanks. Thanks for your service, too.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on item number 16? Good evening. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Stephen Fletcher, and my address is 226 North Franklin Avenue. I will be sharing the alley with the tenant, as my garage is about three properties north of what's pictured on the photograph. My only concern is because of the Dudley House, at the bottom of the picture, I actually, I don't, I've turned around in my head, which is north and south, is north at the top? Yay! Okay, since the Dudley House is to the south and the banquet is to the east, there's a fair amount of foot traffic through that alley. That's actually gotten worse since Deuces Casino has added wireless, because people will now hang out between 818 and Deuces Casino, and boost the wireless on their cellphones, smartphones and whatnot. And this may actually be more of a street department issue. That alley needs to be made one-way, so that you're exiting onto 8th Street instead of entering the alley from 8th Street, or it's just a matter of time until there's an accident. And at the moment, the only people that are playing Russian roulette are me and my neighbor. Sometimes I'm coming back home after dropping my kids off at school, and she's leaving for work, but with the bakery going in and more traffic, I'm concerned, especially since, as you can see with 818, you know, it's forward all the way to the sidewalk, so that's a blind corner. You cannot see people walking west towards the downtown as you're coming out that alley. So I'm not opposed to this, I just have some concerns and hope that it gets done right so that there aren't any issues. So, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on item number 16? Good evening.
Hi, I'm Michelle Rida, I'm the owner of Nikki's La Mexicana on 905 East 8th Street, kitty corner. And just like the gentleman prior said, it's, it's very dangerous in the whole area that we're in right there, and my concern is exactly what he said, the foot traffic, and to bring more parking to the street, if you pass by there at a 4:30, 5 o'clock time zone, the streets are packed with people. And to bring more traffic, I, I just have a big concern with this, with a retail space being open, and there's, they say that they're going to utilize the parking in the casino, but I, I don't know if that's going to happen. It's just too convenient to park right along that street there, and it's, it's dangerous, it's very, very dangerous. And right now, our concern is, we get people parking in our parking lot, which isn't that great, it's not that big either, we have a lot of problems with In-N-Out, but with the gym next to us, to the east, the banquet across the street, the casino would be to our, I guess, south part of our alley, they don't have parking lots. So the banquet does, but the other two places do not. So the street is filled with cars, and it's, it's a huge concern. It's, it's a, it's a, I'm not opposed to what he's trying to put there, but parking is an issue, in that whole area. And we have tried, we have a building on 109 South Indiana, that we're, we're only utilizing about, about half of the building. We tried to get a restaurant permit, a parking permit for, for our restaurant, but we were denied because of the parking spaces that are there, versus renting more parking space from Handyman. Parking is a concern in the area that we're at, period. It's, it's, it's a very big concern. So I just, I just support exactly what he's saying, it's very, very dangerous there, the traffic, foot traffic that we see, a lot of other issues going on, so I hope you guys consider that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on item number 16? Evening, sir.
Alan Prem, 210 North Indiana. My only concern is that that banquet's feeding about 300 people a day. There's a lot of traffic there. And then you got the restaurant, and grocery store Nikki's, and then you got the Chinese restaurant. When the banquet is open, Indiana is full with vehicles. And my other concern is, there's a lot of trash in that neighborhood. Is it going to be more trash? That's all I got to say.
Oh, thank you. Any questions, commissioners? All right. Anyone else from the audience would like to speak on item number 16? Seeing no one, we'll close public testimony at this time and look for Seeing no one, I'll close public testimony at this time and look for commission action.
Move for approval of item number 16.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second that.
And we have a second. Discussion, please, commissioners.
Well, to me, this conditional use permit makes a lot of sense, always respecting, you know, it's sometimes challenging to try and balance the concerns of neighborhood with property owners' rights. We always have to consider both sides of the story, and so I'm glad that all of you that came to speak to this gave your input. That's very helpful for us. In this particular case, it seems to make some sense. They have a reasonable number of parking spaces available. If patrons choose not to use them for whatever reason, that's not something that this commission really has control over. But I know the city is really excellent about looking at requests like one-way alleys to help improve flow and things like that, and I'm sure that's one thing that they will consider as they look at the situation and continue to look at the situation in that whole neighborhood. So with that, I am in support of this because I think it's great to see use of a building come into an area like this.
I would agree with you, Sean, and, you know, we do appreciate you all coming out and expressing your concerns. And I think after the meeting, if you had any questions for staff, they'd be happy to direct you to people that could help you with some of those questions and concerns as well, but I'm in favor of this as well and agree with Sean.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
I was going to say ditto, but we'll skip that one.
It's copyrighted. Careful. All right. There's a motion and a second on item number 16. Commissioners, all in favor of approval for item number 16, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 16 is approved.
Item 17, 6438, 2017. Conditional use for on-sale alcohol within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 2220 South Minnesota Avenue.
The applicant here is Tom Thompson. As you can see on the aerial, it's an existing multi-tenant building, and the applicant would like to utilize the south tenant space for another casino on sale alcohol beverage establishment. The proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment meets the criteria of the comprehensive plan. The West 31st and South Minnesota intersection contains several commercial businesses, including an existing casino to the north in the same strip mall. Because this application has provided clarity to indicate the nature and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for staff? Appreciate it. Is the petitioner here this evening? Evening, sir.
Evening. Paul Reynolds, RCM Services, 4402 South Technology. We're here tonight on behalf of the petitioner, Mr. Thompson.
Anything to add, sir?
Do not. It's a vacant space, recently was vacated, and they'd like to install a casino there.
Very good. Commissioners, any question for the petitioner's representative?
Thank you.
Reynolds? Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on item number 17?
Motion for approval.
A second.
Got a motion for approval in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval for item number 17, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 17 is approved.
Item 18, 6374, 2017. Alternative site plan for signage alternative plan located at 4601 West 26th Street.
The applicant here is Jeremy Josephson with Ace Neon Signs. The Sioux Falls, newly constructed Sioux Falls Ford dealership to the west of the Lowe's would like to utilize the two existing Lorraine Town Center campus identification signs. One is located in the southeast corner of this property adjacent to I-29, and the other is located up towards West 26th Street. Currently, as you can tell, there's a Lowe's store on the property with the sites located east and north of the Lowe's store. The elevation plan does indicate a 10 by 12, which is 120 square foot side panel on the existing freestanding campus ID sign along West 26th Street. That's sign area A. And then finally, they'll be adding 218.25 square foot sign panel, and that will be placed on the larger sign that is adjacent to I-29. The applicant has provided the necessary signage alternative plan criteria as indicated in Section 160.602 signage alternative plans. These campus ID signs were constructed in 2006 under the 1983 zoning ordinance, excuse me, and the intent of these campus identification signs were to allow other businesses within the Lorraine Town Center addition development to use these signs, and one of the sites included in that was, which is now the Ford site. The Ford panels will take the place of existing blank panels in the signs. Because the application has provided the signage alternative plan criteria to warrant the use of the existing campus ID signs, staff recommends approval of these alternative sign plans, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
So this is like a stationary sign? It's not electronic or...
That I don't know. Hopefully, the applicants here that can discuss if it's an EMC sign or if it's just a stationary sign that's not going to move, that I'm not aware of, if it's one or the other, to be honest with you.
The current one is only stationary, but...
The current Lowe's sign is, yep, correct.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here? Evening, sir.
Good evening. Jeremy Josephson, 403 North Kuanis with Ace Signs, representing Sioux Falls Ford.
Anything to add, sir?
The sign is not a message-changing sign. It's a static stationary sign. So it's basically just taking place of the blank panels that have been up there for 10 years, not being occupied. So it's just a face changeout, basically, is all it is.
Sign is backlit or...
Correct, yeah, it's interlit. Yep.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number 18? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Motion to... Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of item number 18, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 18 is approved.
Item 19, 6474, 2017. Alternative site plan for an alternate open space and alternate buffer yard plan located at 1500 South Spring Avenue.
The applicant here is Jonah Lazir. The applicant plans on constructing a four-unit townhome adjacent to South Spring Avenue and then a one-seven unit townhome facing the vacated 23rd Street. The applicant proposes to reduce that front yard setback along South Minnesota Avenue by five feet and the front yard setback along South Spring Avenue by 10 feet. And further, he's also indicating that they're looking at doing an alternative buffer yard plan along South Spring Street for those proposed townhomes. First, we'll kind of discuss the common open space plan. The proposed apartment building requires 25-foot front yards on Minnesota Avenue as well as Minnesota Avenue and Spring, as well as 10-foot side and rear yard setbacks. The applicant's proposing to utilize the 10-foot reduction along South Minnesota Avenue and an eight-foot reduction along South Spring Avenue. The reduction will be a total of 664 square feet on Spring Avenue and 710 square feet along South Minnesota Avenue for a total of 1,374 square feet. The site plan indicates this square footage along the south portion of the lot and includes a gathering area, including patios, grill, and seats. They will kind of utilize that for gathering area instead of people hanging out along Minnesota Avenue. Second, we'll discuss the alternative buffer yard plan. A level A buffer yard is required along South Spring Avenue. We have some adjacent single-family uses. This buffer yard is a 10-foot setback, two-foot berm, or a four-foot fence and 20 units of landscaping per 100 lineal feet. The site plan does indicate the 10-foot buffer yard. They're also proposing to do a one-foot berm, and then they would like to put a three-to-five-foot hedge on top of that berm and blooming perennials in front. The total number of landscape units required is 24 along this, and they are proposing 68. They really just did not want to put a screen fence in here. They thought it would take away from the character of these townhomes. So that's really the alternative, what they're doing, the alternative plan for is to do more of a hedge and flower-type arrangement. The proposed townhome building's utilizing the reduced front yard setbacks and providing an outdoor and gathering area away from the traffic should provide an overall better townhome development for its residents. Finally, the proposed alternative buffer yard should provide the same or overall better landscape design along South Spring Avenue with additional landscape units as indicated on this plan. Because the application has provided the clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this alternative site plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
So what's the setback from Minnesota?
They have 25-foot on Minnesota and 25-foot front yards on Spring.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here this evening? Evening, sir.
Hi. Troy Gillespie with Sire Associates. I'm here representing the applicant, and I don't have a statement, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioners? Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding item number 19? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to approve in a second. For item number 19, any discussion?
I think it looks like a nice development, so I'm in favor of it.
I agree with that.
It looks like the alternative site plan did a good job of kind of representing all the elements we would normally expect, just doing it in a more compressed space, so I appreciate the planning behind that.
Very good. Thank you, commissioners. We have a motion in a second for approval for item number 19. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item 19 is approved.
Item 20, 6475, 2017. Amendment to the initial development plan for the Lake Lorraine pedestrian-oriented planned unit development located at east of South Marion Road and West Lake Shore Boulevard.
This is a development that we've seen quite a bit of over the last couple of years. The applicant is now requesting an initial development plan amendment to continue construction of the Lake Lorraine pedestrian-oriented planned unit development. This initial development plan was originally approved by this body in May of 2014, and the applicant is just updating to include modifications to several portions of the development, including those that had previously been reviewed for the final development plans. Common open space and pedestrian paths are also consistent throughout this development, and street patterns will only minimally be altered as a result of these changes. And I'll quickly go through some of the land use changes. The applicant has identified the following amendments. Buildings located to the northwest and west sides of the lake development will be amended from office uses that they had been shown previously to either office or retail uses as currently. Building size and location has been updated along with the adjacent parking. Housing in the southwest has been amended in size and location and the associated parking with what was constructed there. A hotel, office, retail use is identified in the southeast corner along with adjacent parking, and an increased detention pond size with a three-story apartment building was originally identified on the first initial development plan. Commercial and restaurant buildings on the east side of the development have been amended to include hotel, office, and retail development. The associated parking layout has also been modified for those new land use changes. And there's also a hotel on the north end of the development has been amended to be located adjacent to the lake in lieu of being located adjacent to Lake Shore Boulevard. The submitted initial development plan amendment continues to provide the necessary land use transitions within and the outside edges of this planned unit development. The pedestrian orientation is shown throughout the initial development plan and will continue to be reviewed for consistency during our final development plan acceptance. Because the subject application for the Lake Lorraine Initial Development Plan Amendment is consistent with the intent of the pedestrian-oriented planned unit development, and they still have those proper land use transitions from the single-family to the south, staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
When's the street light going in on 32nd Street?
I think eventually it is, yes.
It has got to be going in with all the lane restrictions right now. Not that I'm driving north and south on Marion Road every day to work back. Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Is the petitioner here this evening?
Hi there, and I'm not Steve Van Buskerk, but I'm the original owner of the property, and I still own quite a bit of it. I'm Cindy Monin with Freezin Development, 615 South Marion Road. And the traffic light is under construction, sort of started. XL is moving their poles back, and I think they'll probably tear into Marion Road next week sometime. So get your turning lane there, Steve. Can I answer any questions?
Yeah, commissioners, any questions for the petitioner?
Oh, okay, well, come on out to Lake Lorraine. What else can I say, huh? Thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience like to speak regarding item number 20? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval for item number 20, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 20 is approved.
Item 21, a resolution adopting the 2040 Sioux Falls Major Street Plan.
Good evening. Sam Trubelcock, Transportation Planner, City Planning Office. I'm going to take you a little bit through the 2040 Major Street Plan. The document that we have now is outdated. It's important that we look at updating it now, especially as we've been through, as you know, an update to our comprehensive plan. A major street plan is a document that consists of a map of a municipality's future collector and arterial streets. As a lot of you know, the arterials, the major roads, the collectors of the roads that go through the neighborhoods and collect traffic from the local streets. And it's important that we identify which of those major roads we have in our city, where they actually are going to be or are now. Why do we need a major street plan? It guides the authority area for the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance and engineering design standards to enforce the following things. Access management, if you're going to actually limit access, where are you going to limit access and what standards to? Well, your arterials are going to have less access. Your collectors will have more, and locals will have more, even more. So that's important to identify. Official map controls, it's not something that we identify now, but we'd be for a future right-of-way for a major street. That's something that we could do in the future, and certainly you would have to identify that as your major street plan. Street right-of-way dedications, arterial streets typically require 100-feet dedications. Well, where are you going to require that? It needs to be identified on the major street plan, and the subdivision ordinances and the engineering design standards indicate arterials, what's the design for collectors, and we need to identify them on the map. And then the joint jurisdiction subdivision area is required by state law. The major street plan needs to show the area, the future area of your joint area, and the major streets must go out to the full extents of that joint jurisdictional subdivision area. Now, what defines the boundary for the major street plan? The shapes of Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan is kind of the guide... The shapes Sioux Falls 2040 Comprehensive Plan is kind of the guide, again, going back to that, to provide the basis for the major street plan boundary, again, for the subdivision authority. Another area that we're working on and being very consistent is the joint zoning area. The major street plan and the comprehensive plan is very consistent with the subdivision and joint zoning authority being the same boundary that we work with Lincoln County and Minnehaw County on. So this, and of course, this process is allowed for public review and comments. You guys have been involved quite a bit in the update of the comprehensive plan, not only the city's jurisdictional area, but the joint area for the county, Minnehaw County and Lincoln County. So I think you guys all would probably agree, there's been plenty of comment there. This is the map. There's a lot going on here, but the major thing to really take away from this is we certainly have made some changes. One of the biggest changes that we made on this map to kind of highlight is the West Corridor. The last map, the West Corridor was off-section. It was kind of a half-mile west of T.L.S. in a large part of the area. Well, that's changed, and now really it's a major arterial. The West Corridor is now on T.L.S. Road for the good part of the area. That's the West Corridor. So we made that change. We've also extended the area, the joint jurisdictional areas being extended. So we extended the area of the major street plan area to identify our major arterials. And typically, those are sectioned line streets or arterials. There are some exceptions to that. One that you might notice is 57th Street as it goes over and across into Iowa. We've talked about that project. You can kind of see how that comes up just to the north a little bit. That's something that we're planning and would need to do if we were going to extend and when we extend 57th Street across into the Iowa area. 85th Street, you might see some changes there. Certainly, we didn't show an interchange there. It does here, identifying an area across and the, with the boundary of T, is that being an arterial. We want to show and continue to show the South Dakota 100 area of what is now, you know, the Veterans Parkway, and we continue to show that as a major arterial roadway. But beyond that, I would take any questions that you have. It is a busy map. The thing to show there is the boundary that we're showing is kind of the hashed, the joint jurisdiction boundary for the major street plan is that outer boundary, which is kind of the black hashed line on the outside, that would be consistent with the zoning jurisdiction that we'll be following through with here in future meetings with the county. So we're looking for your recommendation as this would proceed on to city council. I would take any questions that you have.
Commissioners, any questions for Sam?
I do have one. There's kind of a light purple line that kind of parallels 229 farther to the east and south. I assume that's Highway 100?
Yeah, that's that Veterans Parkway.
Okay.
Right. And it does very much mirror 229 on the east side, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, for item number 21, it looks like they're looking for a recommendation from the commission, so I'll look for commission action.
Motion for approval?
Second.
We got a motion for approval and a second? Any discussion?
It's good to see lots of advanced planning by the city of Sioux Falls. That's great for everybody's development and school districts and everybody. So great to see.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? All in favor of approval of item number 21? Please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item number 21 is approved. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Signify by saying yes.
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 Adjourned. Thank you, Sioux Falls. Make it a great night.
Thank you.